There you go.
We all?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Live.
He doesn't show up at work, I'm supposed to.
All right. Madam Court.
Okay. Time my voice recorder just in case. So I can get minutes. Selena couldn't be with us tonight. She's traveling. But Jennifer has been setting in lately on our last few meetings for the payroll. And I just want to say a statement, and then I want her to do it from her perspective, so that you understand kind of what we're facing. When I was elected, not appointed, when I ran for county clerk, I ran on the fact of being transparent. And I'm here today to show my deep concern about the direction we've taken regarding major organizational decisions, decisions that were made unilaterally without consultation with other elected officials. These are not small routine matters; they are critical components of our county's operations, which is payroll and benefits. Over the past two months, my team has worked diligently to provide all necessary information for payroll system conversions. However, today was the first time we were given access to view the actual payroll program and time management systems. Despite this being our initial opportunity to see the systems firsthand, employees are expected to complete enrollment and begin clocking in this Sunday. In addition, we must still train department heads how to approve time during the most critical time of the clerk's office, which is elections. And right now, elections are my number-one priority. I believe this timeline is premature, as not all programming components have been fully configured or tested. At first glance today, I saw errors that needed addressed, and do not think it is fair that I must spend 15-hour days and weekends to keep us on this timeline. While I understand that some of these delays are the result of time constraints, I must emphasize that the clerk's office manages many other statutory responsibilities that require significant attention and coordination. At no point was I consulted to determine whether this implementation schedule would be feasible within the existing workload of my office. Mr. Beerbauer, I appreciate your willingness to listen to me and treat me with respect the past few meetings. I called you on Tuesday following our training to express my concern that this payroll conversion is moving too quickly. As of today, we haven't spoken, but I want to reiterate that my intent in reaching out was to communicate legitimate operational concerns, concerns that directly impact our ability to ensure a smooth and accurate transition for all employees. Timely communication on matters of this magnitude is essential to the success of the process and to maintain trust among all offices involved. Nonetheless, I've continued to cooperate in good faith and have made every effort to keep up with the process. It is important to note that the period from August through November represents the busiest time of the clerk's office, which Jennifer can attest to. During this time, we are responsible for producing more than 30 budgets, preparing elections, open enrollment for benefits, and setting tax levies. Each of these requires substantial time, precision, and staff resources. In addition, I've been removed from the benefit-related discussions, which has proven to be problematic. My office has received numerous calls from employees about open enrollment, and I have no information, yet I am expected to run the process. Excluding key offices from these conversations has created unnecessary confusion and inefficiencies. It is unfortunate that, as commissioners, you've not been willing to set aside our personal grievances to collaborate on matters as important as payroll and benefits, issues that directly affect the very people who keep this county running. I want to remind you that your employees are also your customers. They are the face of the county government to the public and should be valued and appreciated. A successful organization depends on mutual respect, cooperation, communication among its leadership, and staff. I truly hope that moving forward, we can return to a more collaborative and respectful working relationship, one that serves both our employees and the taxpayers. The decision to remove payroll responsibilities from the clerk's office was portrayed as a cost-savings improvement processes. I must say plainly that it was not an operational improvement; it was a political move. I have repeatedly explained that this change increased costs for the taxpayers. Yet, instead of engaging in a transparent discussion or reviewing the data, this commission has chosen to rely on the assurances of a salesman who claims this move will solve our problems, however, we had none, and it would free up time in our office. The claim is simply not true. In fact, this decision adds unnecessary administrative oversight, no integration with our current accounting system, increased risk of human error, and fails to meet the governance requirements we must adhere to as a county. It undermines the efficiency rather than improving it. Even though payroll is not a statutory duty of the clerk, the clerk is still required to approve all expenditures of the county and book them accordingly per KSA 311 through 318. In addition, during recent public discussions, the commission's comments, "The integrity of the clerk's office and the financial processes implied a failure to perform statutory duties." The county clerk's office is dedicated to transparency and adhering strictly to state law, and I feel I must clarify the established financial controls. The duties of the county clerk and the county treasurer are distinct and are defined by Kansas statutes, which establishes a crucial separation of powers. The county treasurer's office is responsible for the collection of county revenues and collector of taxes and tax distributions. The county clerk's office is responsible for the auditing, recording, and approving all county expenditures, maintaining records of financial statements, and ensuring budget compliance. This separation is the cornerstone of financial controls and checks and balances for the county. The clerk and treasurer work collaboratively to ensure the general ledger and tax accounts are accurate and reconciled. Any action that circumvents these established roles places the county at risk of internal control failures. Our current process for accounts payable in the payroll process are approved by the commission before they are paid, in full compliance with state law. In 2021, as CFO, I assisted in implementing a process where accounts payable and payroll details were included in commission agenda packets and must be formally approved prior to payment processing. In the past, those were never included in packets for transparency. Commission oversight. The commission and county counselor provided ample time and opportunity for oversight. Payroll details are delivered the Wednesday prior to payday, allowing commissioners' time to review and question any payment. Accounts payable detailed registers are presented at every commission meeting. The commission and county counselor have the right and duty to pull any invoice or register item for review and withhold payment. To imply that any payment has been processed without proper oversight or approval is factually incorrect and misrepresents the established auditable procedure. The detailed records are available at every meeting, and my staff stands ready to answer any questions regarding invoices or the process. In addition, another layer of control is in place with the current human resources representative, identifying and giving direction on any exceptions to normal procedures. My office has repeatedly invited each of you to review our operations and receive clarification on our duties. A functioning government requires clear, consistent communication and mutual respect for all elected and appointed offices. The continued focus on unsubstantiated opinions rather than on fact-finding and process education is unproductive and has had a demonstrable negative impact on morale and retention of critical county staff. I say this not out of defiance, but out of duty. It is my responsibility to protect the taxpayer dollars, ensure compliance with the law, and maintain the integrity of the office. Decisions made out of spite or political motivation hurt not only the employees who most carry them out, but also the citizens who are here to serve. In the end, it will be the taxpayers, the employees, and the operations of this county that will suffer the consequences. I urge the commission to reconsider the approach to restore collaboration, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. The people of this county deserve nothing less. And I say all these things because I am doing my very best in my office to try and accommodate the changes that you want. However, as Jennifer can talk more in specifics, because I want you to hear it from someone other than me about what this new payroll system is doing.
Jennifer.
Okay. I didn't prepare any type of statement. I'll just say, Mike, I know you wanted me to jump on these calls, so I've sat in on a call Tuesday, and then today, they showed us the platform in which employees will be using. I really wanted to get in, know the ins and outs, so that I can help get all 115 employees set up, so that Sunday we can go live. I do have some concerns. Employee codes aren't correct. If that's not correct, what else isn't correct? They said today that they can't accommodate the state overtime and blended rates that we see in our sheriff's department, so we'll have to continually to, we will have to manually calculate those. Right now, they don't have the auto lunch break, so that's something that we currently have with CIC. It's set up for 30 minutes for certain employees, an hour for certain employees. Supervisors can't approve time weekly like they do now. If they were to approve weekly, so that employees can no longer make any type of changes, then that employee won't be able to clock in or clock out the following week. Right now, the employees have to use their name code, which they don't know, instead of the four-digit code that they're used to. Though, when asked those questions, they said they'd have to get to programming to try to get that fixed, so that we could, the employees can continue to use what they're used to. But my main concern is employees can change the cost center and their job title. So what that means is if Sam decides he wants to get paid as treasurer this week, he can easily go in from his webpage or his app and change it. They cannot lock that, because if they lock it, it's locked for everybody. So supervisors can't change it, the administrators can't change it. So if we have somebody that moves from one department to another, they can't change it. It's a major concern for me, because now it's, if employees have the option to do that, and quite frankly, it can be done by mistake. I helped somebody set up an app on their phone, and they're like, "Oh, what does this do?" So they started scrolling through. That would change their pay rate, that would change their code, that would change the fund in which they're paid. So that is a major concern for me, that an employee is going to inadvertently do so. And is there a report that could probably be checked for that? Yes, but that's going to include a lot more work for the person that's already doing the payroll. Quite frankly, the system seems rather clunky compared to what we have now. In my opinion, we are taking two steps back from what we have with CIC. It looks like it's going to be harder for employees to use.
Are you talking about the time clock?
Yes, the pay entry.
Time clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So not only that, and if we have to continually to manually calculate things, that there's opportunity for human error there. I still don't know what is going to happen with the automatic invoicing. So right now, with CIC, it knows that, hey, this person gets this deducted from their check, this gets this deducted from their check. It sounds like we are going to have to use three different systems to figure somebody's pay now, instead of using the one system that we have now.
If we would have known about this.
Point of order. Yes, you do.
Are you done?
I can say that this is the first time that we have seen this. So we didn't know that any of these errors or any of these concerns were there, because we saw this at about 10:30 this morning.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Hang on, hang on, hang on. Now, because I want to give both of you guys and all of us a chance to discuss.
Okay. My discussion is simply, I would have liked the payroll vendor to be involved in this That would be the wisest thing to do here, rather than just tell the commission about the problems. We need to tell them about the problems.
Okay. And?
This is a big onion to unpack.
Yeah?
Yes. There's a rollout of a new program, there's glitches. That is very unfortunate. But I think having all, all the players at the table would have helped out immensely.
I agree.
I mean, the fact that this came onto the table, onto the agenda.
On a special meeting? Sorry.
At the 11th hour, without any, I mean, you know, somebody should have called Emerson and said, "Hey, get down here, we're going to have a conversation tonight," because I have, I hear what you're saying. I have questions about that, too. But I'm not going to put words into Mr. Emerson's mouth, I'm not going to deny what you two have seen is right or wrong. I'm just, okay, you're reporting back to us, that's great, but those people need to be here.
All right. Okay. You done?
I'm done, sir.
Okay. And I agree that we need to have all the parties at the table. I appreciate these two coming to the table, even in the special meeting, because this thing goes online Sunday, so.
My question there is why can't we?
Let me finish. Allowing us to have the opportunity to understand what some of the problems are, so then maybe tomorrow, we can reach out to the vendor, because we still have, it's still a workday, and see if we can't put this thing on hold, and then bring them in on Monday at the regular meeting, and then see what we can do. That gives the vendor the opportunity to, the issues that were brought up, to look at those issues. So, I mean, that's what I'm, that's how I'm viewing it, is that we could reach out to them tomorrow, but as far as launching this thing on Sunday, it don't sound to me like it's going to be, you know, I mean, it may physically happen, but we're going to have a big mess if we allow it to go.
Okay. So my question is, why didn't we just talk to Mr. Emerson about that, instead of having a whole special meeting about it?
We're not having a whole special.
I talked to Deputy Ross earlier, and he's expressed some concerns, and I told him, I don't see a problem in moving this. We didn't set the date.
Actually, you did.
Point of order. Please finish.
Thank you, with your cup lid.
Please finish.
You know, I don't, I don't see, I don't see why we wouldn't just keep working through this until we got the kinks worked out, and then move forward.
Mr. Emerson hasn't been on any of the calls. He was on the very first one, and that was it. And so the only person that could talk to this would be Jolene, who has been working with us side by side. And she's with Payentry, not with Mr. Emerson's company. So that would be the individual that you would want to probably have in the meeting. I don't know if she would be willing to come in a night meeting. We would just have to ask her. But no one else has been on our calls except for us.
Well, okay. Are you done?
Yeah.
What I'm kind of looking at here is that, I don't know who set the timeline up, who set the schedule, but everybody that apparently was involved in it, but why we would have allowed it to do during election time. I mean, that's the biggest thing is for the clerk, is that she's going to be tied up between now and the 4th, and then after, because they've got to be verified. That kind of cuts into that. So, I mean, allowing her time to do that. So what I'm saying is their issues that, from, I guess this was day one, so reach out to Emerson, because that is our vendor, and ask him if they can delay this until the following week, at least, and allows us time to have a discussion with them and everybody at the table, and work out these issues. I'm not saying that I want to drop them or anything like that, but I'm saying is that we need to proceed a little slower than what we're doing right now.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was told that I was supposed to do it at the end of the quarter. And when we started, when they started down the path of all the information that they needed, I said, "That's not, that's not possible with all the things that I had going on." And so it was delayed until November 1st. With open enrollment coming on, everything's going to change within the system, because you have certain things set up for benefits. And so ideally, the proper time to do it would have been at the end of the year, and we run our W-2s, and then they take over January 1. That would have been ideal, but I felt like it was being rushed.
Okay. You have called me.
Yes, I do. This is not, this is not a forum for an argument. This is a forum where something was brought to our attention, we need to discuss it between the three of us. That's my first comment about this whole thing. Okay? Second of all, is I understand the issues that we have with implementing a new program. I totally get it. But in everything I've ever done in my life, you either help or you hinder. So my thing is real simple, it's like, yes, we have challenges, we have some serious challenges. But if we have a problem, come to the table with a solution, or a possible solution, not hindrance. It's like, I understand you're under a lot of stress, that there's a lot of things that needs to get done, so are we, so is everybody. This system, for whatever reason it was, when I got here three months ago, was basically mission effective, and we're trying to make it effective. We're trying to streamline things, we're trying to make things better. Some of it is working, some of it isn't. We're going to make mistakes, but I think as a group, to include you, madam, to include you, madam, to include everybody that's elected, works in this building, we need to work as a team, as a team. We're sitting here, I'm listening to a speech that does not paint us well in a public forum. We are elected by them, they are, we are their voice. And I apologize for being terse, but I'm very frustrated, because we're trying to get this thing off the ground, we're trying to make it better. And I don't disagree with many of what Madam Clerk says, but I'm like, look, we've got to come and be positive, we've got to move the ball forward. I agree with what you're saying.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is talk to Tim Emerson, have him backtrack it. I don't say a week, I say give it two weeks, okay? And make sure that all the programming, there wasn't a beta test. So nobody beta-tested that program, and that's why we're having issues. So that program needs to be beta-tested, okay? That's my suggestion. All right? And in the end, we just stay on top, we just keep talking to each other, okay? Please? All of us?
Yes. And Commissioner Tran, I did ask if there was a sandbox that I could, to get in and test, and they told me that that wasn't available, there's not a quality testing environment, because I did ask that, because I wanted to test it, because I've done this enough times.
We need to be moving forward.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, but I also, I don't underst, there was, I don't feel like there was anything broken in our system. So that's why I don't understand why there was such a pressing issue to move. I didn't, we didn't have any problems on our end.
Well, that, and that's a decision that we made at the time.
Yep.
And I'm going to stick with that.
Okay.
And so.
I appreciate the candidness.
Right now, what we're moving forward is to get ahold of Mr. Emerson, or the company, and let's bring the issues that they have to them, and then talk about what Commissioner Tran there just recommended. I'm for that. Let's delay it, and let's start moving forward.
I wasn't in any of these conversations, so I'd be more than happy for you to email the issues to Tim.
Well, you're, you don't want, I can.
Did you let him know about the issues?
Tim has not been in any of the conversations, so I don't know if he's the right one, or I don't know.
Yeah, but, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
You are right now the liaison with Emerson's, right? So will you reach out to him? I mean, if not, I'll, I can do it, or Commissioner?
I'm just really confused about this platform. If I'm the liaison, I don't know why we didn't just talk about this and talk to Tim and set it back. I mean, if that's.
May I?
Yes.
Sure. If you two, would you just give us the latitude of emailing your document, and you can scan that, that document you have, send it to the three of us?
Okay.
Okay? And that way, you're going to communicate through Bob, okay? Let's just be straight about that. If you need me to help, you need Commissioner Beerbauer to help, we'll help you. But please give her, the three of us, that document, so we have it, so we can at least put our eyes on it.
Absolutely.
Okay? Because, yes, you are the liaison. I am also the liaison for PW, but the thing is, like, nothing happens in a vacuum. We always talk as like, look, we're a part of a team, we're going to work as a team. So if you need assistance, or if I see something that you may not see, or Commissioner Beerbauer doesn't see, or the madam doesn't see, then, hey, I'll chime in, okay? Does that, does that work for you, ma'am?
I would just like them to communicate the issues, and when it's ready to launch, it can launch.
Okay.
Then we'll go with that narrative. I'll talk to Tim, and Jennifer can be included.
Wait, who's, no, no, no.
She's going to talk.
Okay. Okay. That's fine.
You guys just get us the, what you have, and then she'll reach out to them, and then Monday, let's, at the regular meeting, put this on the agenda.
Okay. You want Tim to be here Monday?
If he, if he wants to, yeah.
I would recommend that Mr. Emerson, or whoever the person who's running the program, be here to talk to us.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
All right.
So, Monday's payroll. Do payroll as normal?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need.
Okay.
I'll send that on out tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the list, do you need to take a break?
No.
Anybody? All right. Next up is noise resolution. Originally, I had planned this to be a work session, part of the original work session, and then if we needed to do any action, we would have this special meeting for, to be able to take action on a noise resolution. But since we're already in the meeting, we'll just run it that way. I have not had a chance to review it, but I do have a citizen that, let me make sure, here you go, has provided us a resolution that he has worked on. Do you want to present it?
No, sir.
No, sir? No? Okay.
All I will show you is I used adjacent county.
Okay. That's the one I was looking at earlier today, too, and Douglas County as well.
And took the EPA standards, which they said were not law, but they were considered reasonable.
So let's, we'll just start here on the, on the first page regarding, and it's an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, regulating unreasonable excessive and disturbing noise within the county and providing penalties for violations thereof. Article 1, purpose and authority. Whereas public health, safety, comfort, and welfare are best served by reasonable regulation of loud and necessary and unusual noises, the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, by authority granted under KSA 19-101A and other applicable laws, does hereby adopt the noise ordinance. Definition, Article 2, noise means any sound that is loud, discordant, or unnatural to the surroundings and which endangers or injures the public health or welfare, or disturbs the reasonable peace, comfort, or repose of persons. Residential property means any property upon which a dwelling unit is located. Plainly audible means a sound that can be heard by an unaided human ear at a distance of 75 feet from the source. Stationary source means any sound-producing device which is not mobile, including mechanical devices, fixed engines, or equipment. Motor vehicle means any vehicle intended for highway use, including automobiles, trucks, and motorcycles. Is there any questions or concerns regarding this so far in the article and definitions?
The only thing I see is it talks about plainly audible, and again, I'm not going against it, I'm just saying, based upon what I've read and done my research, there are reverberations that do impact residents. Like, you and I have been around heavy equipment, you know, like when a tank rolls by, it's not necessarily loud, but there's a reverberation. Makes sense? So in some of the EPA documents, they alluded to that, that, hey, there is noise, but then there are, it's not, they don't use the word reverberation. I was looking up as you were talking, but basically, it's wavelengths that you can feel. So that, I think we need to add that, too, if we could find that verbiage.
Okay. What was?
But if you eliminate the noise, you eliminate the vibration.
Well, that's not necessarily true. So, I mean, according to EPA, there's not me, and I remember reading, I got to find that doc.
Okay.
I'm good otherwise, sir.
Okay. So you want to add that definition?
I would like to, once I find it.
Okay. All right. So I'll go with, are, do you have any questions?
Not so far.
Not so far. Okay. Article 3, prohibited acts. It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, cause, or permit to be made, or continue any loud and necessary, unusual, or unnatural noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, how. disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of- I think I'm missing part of this. That's A, then it jumps to D.
What article do you want?
Huh?
Which article do you want?
Article... Three? Prohibited acts.
It ended up with D. Yeah, there's some missing, because it's A, and it goes to D.
Yeah, we're missing some of this.
Alright.
Let me check the email.
Huh?
I can check my email.
Yeah. This looks almost, um, in line with Atchison Counties, uh, and also some of Douglas Counties. Is, from some of it that I'm, I'm looking at here. What I know of on, uh, yeah, we're, we can move on though.
Just go on to the next article.
Yeah, article four, enforcement and penalties. Uh, enforcement shall be by the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department or authorized, or authorized as a me. Violations may result in notice of violation, citation, or both. Um, any persons convicted shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a fine of not more than five hundred dollars. Uh, imprisonment in the county jail for not more than thirty days or both. Each violation constitutes a separate offense. Uh, the county may seek abatement or injunction relief to stop continuing, continued violations. Um, any concerns, questions regarding?
That was article six.
Article six, I'm sorry.
You said article four.
Well, yeah, and I jumped, I'm sorry.
Well, no, there's no article four.
Yeah, there's no article four or five.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was-
That's what's in the missing pages.
Okay.
Printing this for you.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna print it, Michael, it's gonna on the printer.
She's printing it out for you.
Oh, okay. Because, uh, three includes the decimal, the, uh, the DBs.
Okay.
Day, day and night.
Did you print three, like, four copies?
Well, Michael can make the word when it prints.
Okay, gotcha.
It's printing right now, Michael. There's two of them.
Well, there's, yeah.
This is the same, I'm not gonna print the second thing, just the first.
Then we'll back up. And we'll take a three-minute, five-minute recess, leave by three to five.
Did he just call a recess?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking about something.
It only printed two pages.
Yeah, and it's not even the resolution.
I printed exactly what you said. This is, um, is this done after this, or are you intending to go back to a work session?
I, I would like to go back to the work session, I would like to-
This is so odd.
No, it's, it's, I, I would like to keep pressing four.
With this?
Well, yes, I, I'd like to, I'd like to definitely press four with the resolution, I also like to-
I'm gonna try to print it one more time, Michael.
Okay.
Did, did you get at least consecutive pages, or?
No, it, it started with, uh, article three.
Is it, how's it sent to you, is it PDF?
Well, they were, they were word documents, they had PDFs.
Okay.
If you had, just print the two PDFs, it's all in one.
That's, that's it, that's all I'm doing. This was one of them. That was one of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's-
And the other one is that right there.
This is the public notice.
How much you pay for this whole document you got it? How much you trying to sell for?
Fifteen thousand.
How much you trying to sell for?
You want it?
No.
The one you asked for?
Oh, because you're trying to sell it to EMS, for training.
It'd be good training, because you go back and put the training in.
Where do we go about the training?
That's your issue.
From here to station two.
Exactly.
Great, thanks for doing your makeup, getting money to EMS to hold that.
Oh, yeah, I did. Yeah, Stronghold, take it over.
Just the parents are trying to grip stuff. They just have a card for the bank. They can out, they can out. They wanted me to pick up trucks all over here.
I don't think there, this is the one we designed.
Is it urgent? It's our only chance. And then I call them, maybe stop here. What sensor might that be?
They're just-
That's pretty nice that you picked much of that up.
Yeah. There's always-
So back to the key.
Well, that's a lot, yeah. Because it's not just my salary, it's the cost of it.
Right, right.
I have, uh, I have the lap of jelly jars. Just the jars and the, the lid not close to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need that?
They get a stop.
Yeah.
Here, we pass overtime, this big here.
I know that.
Oh, shit.
She is violating the rules.
I did. I was making a mess, and next time, it seems you're gonna save somebody.
I got you. But-
Wait, the word documents, but she can't print, you didn't print those word documents, man?
I probably did, but I didn't. I was working on the very same thing that you were working on. I just don't got, uh, as far, I didn't get as far into it, because I was looking at, uh, I was looking at, uh, their word documents. Douglas County's got a really good tool, but there's a nuisance handle. This is nuisance.
So we back?
Yeah, we're back.
So while we're waiting for that stuff to print out, do you wanna talk about anything else, about this?
Well, we can only talk about this.
Okay.
Well, there's two things on here, you can talk about either one.
Unless you wanna amend the agenda.
No, what I'm saying is, can I talk about-
I don't think you have a men's special.
Sorry.
Can I talk about the process that got us here?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, to the folks out in Zini, I, I spoke to some of you, and I backfilled you, I tried to talk to as many as I could, but I did speak to three lawyers this week, okay? We tried to do an injunction, that was a no-go, because we don't have standing, okay? We tried to do a cease and desist, that's also a no-go, because we don't have standing. So the last thing that we're left with is this resolution, okay? Let's see how this works. It's, it's uncharted territory. I mean, Michael Hoyt was very good in providing us with a lot of stuff from KADG, and basically, state of Kansas, there is no rule. There's no laws against noise. So this is uncharted territory for, for us, for this county. So, we're gonna try to craft the document as succinctly as possible, and to be all-encompassing as possible, without being so egregious that it's easy to fight, makes sense? There's a way to write it where you're getting what you need, but not so much where you're really messing with people. Because when you get to that point, then it, it's Pandora's box opens up, so just- Sorry?
It becomes litigious.
Yes, so, we're just trying to do right by everybody, so that's where we're at right now, okay? So, and, uh, to you, ma'am, I haven't seen you before, so it's nice seeing you. I'm sorry you're going through this, I've been out to your house three times, so, and it's like, yeah, I understand what you're going through, so. That's all I have, Jim.
Okay, thank you. I was, uh, bringing up some of this stuff that I was looking up today, uh, to reemphasize what he said about the injunction and the cease and desist. I also had same conversation with the same attorneys. And the noise resolution gives us standing, so those things do come to the table down the road, but we have to go through these, because we were not zoned, and so we're working on, on that process as well. And then, working on this resolution will allow us to do some things, so that hopefully we get you some resolve, some, some, so. I think she's getting some copies for us, so, uh, we'll just, uh, keep moving on. The one thing I did, I mean, if you wanna look back on here, on the enforcement and penalties, I would like to, um, before we approve on that, with the, the sheriff, I would definitely want to have that discussion with them, um, before we, uh, put that in writing. But they are the enforcers of it.
Can I ask you, but, did this give priority to the ninth?
No.
This, this is just, uh, discussion and, uh, trying to get something in a package that we can look at, have our attorney look at, and then hopefully, Monday at the, at the earliest, that we could probably, in our regular meeting, look at this as a, in, in, in a, a written form.
Does it have to be published?
Yes, yes.
Then, I think I'll take the fact.
Yeah.
Will you guys be allowing any public comment or express concerns on this?
Uh, you wanna do that now?
Yes, absolutely.
While we're waiting on that.
If you don't mind, post the-
Please state your name and-
Uh, my name's Zach Ross, I live down in the Garland area. Saw the announcement about this meeting, and just, I have some concerns, the issue of the noise ordinance has come up in the past. Not taking away from any of you folks or what you've got going on. I would just like to express concern, I hope the commission will consider. I don't know if you guys are trying to enforce this retroactively, if existing businesses will be grandfathered in. But, I would urge you guys to be careful in your wording. I own a kennel business in the south end of the county, we've been there for years. Our neighbors we have are great, we get along with them great, we work with them great, but it's a little concerning to me as a business owner, that somebody could buy land next to me, move in, build a house, and then report my kennel that's been there for, the building and kennel itself have been there for fifteen years. So, that somebody could move in and then report me for a noise violation when I've been there for years, is concerning to me.
Yes.
And so I would hope, you know, if we're not gonna grandfather people in that are already in business, I would hope you guys consider that, um, in your wording, and make sure you protect other local businesses. We're not, you know, running other local, longstanding local businesses out to solve the problem with one newcomer. So, that's just my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other comments regarding?
Yeah, since he said that, you're not gonna- Since that guy's already in there, and he's talking about grandfathered in, is that gonna make it where he's, can still do what he's doing?
He was there first.
I was there first, yes.
But actually, the, the refrigerator, what are you gonna call it, it was there before you went in there.
No, no.
It wasn't?
No.
No.
That thing, that place has been abandoned for fifteen years.
Well, I know it's been abandoned, but it was there.
That noise technology was not there.
Well, I know that that was, that that, that was there.
If you want them there.
No, I don't want them there, I'm just saying.
Hey, 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 hey.
I, I don't want them there.
Quiet. We're not, we're not, you know, if you guys wanna have a conversation outside, take it outside, but, um, okay, Mr. Raines, um, that is gonna be a, a question and a concern that we'll address with, with our county attorney. Not taking away from Mr. Ross or, or the kennel out there, but that's a different kinda noise.
Yeah, that's a weird one.
Yeah, and that's, I'm not against it.
And, and, uh, the ordinance will probably, because it does cover even agricultural noises like cows and stuff like that, that's, you know,
we're talking about reasonable.
And what, what, what you're experiencing right now is not-
Dustful generator.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there, there's, it's night and day, you know, so.
And so that's all I'm asking, I'm just considering it.
Okay.
Not something that's so broad that it's-
Right, we're, we're, that's why, that's why we're, we're, we're working on this, in, in the detail that we are. Mr. Hoyt?
I, I, I would compare it to a speed limit change, um, let's say one day it's posted at thirty-five, and you drove through there yesterday at seventy-five, and now, Trey pulls you over because it's, I'll post it at thirty-five. But this would be enforced the minute that it's posted.
Perfect.
Thank you. Alright, so, we wanna continue going through this?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Let's go.
So, we should now, on three, we had A, which was annoyed, uh, was prohibited acts as section three. And then A is annoys, annoy, disturb, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of others. Or B interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property by a person of reasonable sensibil- sensitibilities. Uh, two, um, between the hours of ten PM and seven AM, it shall be unlawful to cause any noise which is plainly audible at a distance of seventy-five feet or more from the source on any residential property. No person shall operate or permit to be operated any motor vehicle or sound applica- applic- I can't say it. There you go, system in a motor vehicle so as to make or cause to be fa- made any sound which is plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet or more from the motor vehicle. Uh, stationary sources shall not emit sounds that exceeds the maximum permissible levels below which measured at the boundary of another property. And then, we have zoning and, or use districts, daytime, seven AM to ten PM, nighttime, ten PM to seven AM. Residential areas, sixty decibels, uh, nighttime fifty. Agricultural, rural areas, sixty-five decibels during the day, fifty-five at night. And commercial industrial areas, seventy decibels and six, and daytime and sixty for the day. Uh, or for nighttime. Uh, article, uh, four?
Point of word?
I'm sorry.
Point of information, actually.
Yeah.
So, it's saying between the hours of seven AM and ten PM for the zones of residential, agricultural, and commercial, so, in that order, sixty decibels for residential, sixty-five decibels for ag, and seventy decibels for commercial or industrial. So seventy, for everybody out there, I'm looking at the list, seventy DB is a vacuum cleaner. So, if you're in, on a farm or rural, the most- So, if you're in, on a farm or rural, the most you could pump out is 65 dB, which is between normal speech is 60 and a vacuum cleaner's, uh, 70. So, I would take a look at that and maybe bump that number a little bit because it's during the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So you got farmers out there that, you know.
It says it does not apply to farm operations.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
That's in the exceptions down the line there.
Yes, but that's what I'm getting at other places because it's like, let's be reasonable with people. Most places is 10 o'clock quiet hour, you know, so I mean, you might have a, you know, single to mile party. And on that one, you're gonna have, oh, probably 110 decibels until 10 o'clock. And at which time we gotta shut down, or else the sheriff will come out and, you know.
Uh, hang on, hang on.
So, all I'm saying is in final documentation-
Okay, yeah, and I was jumping real quick, so I want us to have discussion on this. This is section three. So, that's the prohibited acts. On the research and stuff that I did on the resolutions, they really didn't get into this detail of it because then you have to have the, you're going to get caught up in what type of monitoring equipment or measuring equipment that you're going to use. And so really, what it comes down to is that first part on section A. Um, what is annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, house peace, or safety of others. So, I mean, I wouldn't really want to add the whole decibel and get caught up into that discussion or in this resolution. Uh, the two that I looked at, the one from Douglas County and the one, this one from Atchison County, it did not include them. These are EPA standards, um, which, I mean. Uh, they have merit, but again, uh, we're going to be asking if the sheriff's department was to be the, uh-
The enforcement?
Enforcement, uh, part of this, then we would have to provide equipment.
Right, a decimeter or something, yeah.
Yeah, that, same as any other piece of equipment, radar and all that would have to be shown calibration and training. I'm sorry.
I would think though, particularly in this situation, you would have an industrial hygienist come out and take readings before you ask the sheriff to take any action. Anything that's not considered a nuisance, then it would never be reported. Like the dogs.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, like, I mean, way to Atchison County, the way I got the interpretation of it is is that if it's causing a disturbance or causing, you know, and in this case where we have the high possibility, I haven't looked at that generator that being not having the proper muffler on it or utilizing equipment to downgrade the noise. It is unreasonable to expect the neighbors to, at further than 75 feet, to have to endure that. So, it does give us the ability to bring it into court and file the cease and desist or the injunction. So, in the same case, if, if Mr. Ross is on his example with the kennel and by not including this and making it be what, you know, if he got new neighbors and then they saw all of a sudden complained, then, you know, it would be reasonable for him to be able to defend that, you know, without having to go out and measure the sound levels. That's what I'm getting at is having the sound levels becomes then-
You don't want to leave it up to too much interpretation.
Right, right, that's what-
If you don't narrow it down, then it becomes undefensible.
Right. That's, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but the whole time you were saying, I was like, how do you defend this if you're vague? Makes sense? So, again, this is something, it's going to go to Bob.
Yeah.
Bob will give us his read. I'm sorry?
I said Bob's already got it.
Oh, okay, all right, cool.
May I just ask one clarifying question? You said 70 decibels is a vacuum cleaner?
Yeah, basically. But it's not, it's not that it's loud, it's duration of the noise.
Yeah, but the stuff he's got going on over there is not much over that. So, it's nothing like a vacuum cleaner.
Right, but it's not, it's not the, it's not the, how noisy it is, it's how long it lasts. It's the duration.
Okay.
Because before, before when they were only running it up for an hour or two, whatever, the human brain, the physiology of the human body is like, okay, cool, we'll deal with it. Kind of like construction, right?
Thank you.
But anybody who's been in cities and listened to the pile driver, that pile driver just go boom, boom, boom. Okay, during normal hours, it's okay, it's not real loud, but you can feel the reverberation. But when you're trying to sleep at night, you're gonna feel the reverberation and you're not gonna sleep. Makes sense?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can I add something? On that, that 75 feet away, in the 70 decibels, it can't go over 70 decibels 75 feet away, is what this is getting at?
That's during the day, sir. At night, it drops down.
So, 75 feet away, it can't go farther than that?
It's actually 65.
Well, that's perfect. You know, that's perfect.
65 day, 55 at night.
That's, that's, that's not, that's the decibel.
Decibel.
The decibel drops at night because of the inversion.
In our property line, like I said, it bumps right up to it. Pretty much across the road, you've seen it. So, that's, you know, we'd be able to enjoy our front yard again. So, it is, you know, place of residence.
So, what that gives you, Mr. Rains, is you don't have to measure from your house. You measure from the telephone pole, right there on the corner. That's where you're gonna measure. Because you own up to that telephone pole.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
This is awesome.
Yep.
Sir?
Yeah, um, I-
Well, this is over, I guarantee you, you're gonna get a hell of a handshake.
Yeah, I was, because we were talking about vacuum cleaners, I just wanted to, um, I had seen this, so I was bringing it back up. Uh, this is part of my, you know, in my research, it says OSHA, U.S. Occupational Safety and Health Administration mandates employers implement a hearing conservation program for workers exposed to a time-weighted average of 85 decibels or higher. Um, and so, you know, in industrial areas, you know, in cleaning areas and places like that, if you're running a vacuum for a longer, you know, you're required to wear hearing protection. So, in this case, even at 75 decibels, if it's equal, which it's, it's a different sound. I mean, Arrowhead Stadium's 140-some decibels, and so what's that equal to? But it's not the same as a jet engine. It's a different noise, but it's still the same high, high-level drone. Uh, so what they're dealing with out there may not make the same sound as a vacuum cleaner, but over a long period of time, exposure to that, that decibel becomes a problem. And so even OSHA, it recognizes that with somebody that is running a vacuum through, you know, a 150 office building, you know, they're going to be required to wear hearing protection to do that. I mean, even on, I don't even know what the decibel level is on a weed eater, but, I mean, it requires that you wear hearing protection right off the bat. Same way with, you know, rifle ranges and stuff like that, which I wish the service would have listened to back in my day.
You didn't like the little-
Well, we didn't, there was a mandatory hearing aid or hearing protection back in the day. I mean, that came later, after people started going deaf.
If a person has a hearing problem.
And in combat, you don't, you don't stop to put your hearing protection in, so.
You want me to read the rest?
Yeah, your turn.
All right, Article 4, specific prohibitions. The following acts are declared to be violation of this ordinance, but this list is not exclusive. One, operating outdoor power equipment, lawn tools, or machinery between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Discharging the exhaust of any vehicle or any engine or device except through a muffler designed to prevent loud or explosive noise. Operating a vehicle or machinery in such a manner as to create unnecessary grating, grinding, or rattling sound. Operating amplified music or loudspeaker at a volume plainly audible at or beyond the property boundary. Article 5, exceptions. This ordinance shall not apply to: A, emergency vehicles and public safety operations during emergencies; B, activities authorized by county permits, special events, parades, et cetera; C, normal farm and agricultural operation consistent with accepted practices; D, construction or maintenance activities conducted between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM provided reasonable noise control is observed. Article 6, enforcement and penalties. One, enforcement shall be by the Bourbon County Sheriff or authorized designee. Two, violation may result in a notice of violation, citation, or both. Three, any person convicted shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a fine of no more than $500. $500 imprisonment in the county jail for no more than 30 days or both. Each day of the violation constitutes a separate offense. Four, the county may seek abatement or injunctive relief to stop continued violations. Article 7, severability. If any portion of this ordinance is held invalid, the remainder shall remain in full force and effect. Article 8, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced after publication once the official county newspaper, as provided by law.
I have to read the rest of it, it's just the official notification in the paper and the resolution, so this is it.
Okay, so, is anybody, um... Do you have a, one alternative that you want to?
No, I think this is, this is pretty cool.
Okay. What, Commissioner Milburn, do you have an alternative? Any changes or additions to this one? Time to look at it. Time to look at, okay. Um, this is right in line with what I was, what I was researching and looking at. So, I appreciate you bringing this and giving us something to work off of. And yes, I would like to study it more, but I'd also, you said a copy was sent to our attorney? So thank you for doing that. Uh, and-
Sent it at 1:30 this morning on purpose.
Okay, and so-
It's on the 3:30.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I would ask that we bring this back to the regular meeting on Monday. Um, and... Yeah, unless you guys want to make it longer.
No.
I think we got ample time to-
Yeah, I think, I think I got enough more and enough time to look at over the weekend. My biggest concern is I want to make sure that legal has-
I'll visit with him tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So, I don't have an issue with what you want to do on Monday. I would just say, let's see what legal says. Makes sense?
Okay.
Because I don't want a shoddy product coming to us that has loopholes or is vague.
All right.
I had a couple of things, and I'm not trying to make it, but-
Can you step up to the-
I'm Mary Ridge and I live in Zini. And I have like direct back access to this noise, and I hate it. Okay? But I also know that I have other problems, I have had other problems in our area with fireworks being shot off for four hours and guns being shot repeatedly, especially when we're trying to hunt. So, I don't know if that needs to be addressed in here. I'm sure your attorney is probably going to look at that because when I called the sheriff's department about the fireworks that went off for four hours, they told me there's nothing they could do because there's no noise, no noise ordinance. Okay? I just think that maybe needs to be addressed, like maybe a certain timeframe you can shoot your fireworks off, or, you know.
Just worry about the generator.
Can we just fix the generator?
Well, I know, I'm just saying that it's-
We're not, we're not, we're-
No.
No, I agree.
Your noise ordinance.
Right, I agree with you. This isn't about the generator.
I know it is about the generator. I don't want it. I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just saying this is something else you need to look at with that.
Right, I agree. I agree, thank you.
Every year, we do a Fourth of July, start and stop, right?
I don't believe-
I think I-
No, county don't, city does.
We're not going down that rabbit hole tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
No rabbit holes.
That's where your attorneys should decide anyways.
I mean, thank you for bringing it over.
Okay, so, any, yeah, thank you. Any other?
Other than what I brought up initially about the DBs, the decibel range for... It might be a little bit too low. It might be a little bit too restrictive during the day, is what I'm getting at. But that, we'll let Bob tell us then.
Okay. All right, and so with that, is there any other thing regarding items on this agenda that you have, that you wish to discuss before I motion for adjournment?
I have nothing, but are we going to go back to doing a work session on?
Yes.
Then I'm good.
So people can't mow their yard before 7:00 AM?
Well, that's something you need to discuss. I know you get up at dawn.
What happens, no-
Do you have a neighbor?
Good someday.
Commissioner Milburn, exceptions. Article 5, exceptions. Normal farm and ag operation consistent with accepted practices.
If you want to mow your yard at 7:00 AM, you can.
You can do that.
Well, but Article 4. Operating outdoor power equipment, lawn tools, and machinery between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
And that has to be, that has to be a decibel level that's well outside the norm from your property.
I mean, again, that may not make it to the final draft.
Right, so my question is, how close are you to your neighbors?
Mowing your yard constitutes farm and ag practice.
Right.
I could tell you in Arizona, they had to amend that for the landscapers to use their leaf blowers in the summertime at 4:00 AM when it was cooler because they quit at noon.
Yeah. Yeah, and not all that stuff's gonna make it.
Saturday's week.
Right.
You know, you gotta look at it like that. Mowing your yard, you know, an hour and a half job, it's done. Ain't hearing no more.
Well, it's listed in here, this is the problem.
They make white ass-
That might be something that we definitely look at striking out of it.
He'll get me fined.
Well, I've got a question concerning Zach and mowing and stuff. Why couldn't there, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, but if the noise lasts longer than, say, two hours, except for those that are already in the exception, you know, ag and stuff. If noise lasts longer than a two-hour straight timeframe, then, you know.
Durations definitely has to be addressed in this.
Be addressed. But also, the other thing about all of this is, what is a reasonable person? How does a reasonable person view this? So, a reasonable person, most likely, not saying anything about Michael Milburn mowing her lawn at 7:00 in the morning. They might have an issue if you're there at 3:00 in the morning, but, you know, that's, again, it's what a reasonable person will look at, and that's what the judges will look at.
They have lights on lawnmowers for a reason.
I understand.
I mean, by that, I mean, again, I'm not against any of this, but I feel like a reasonable person would say if you move in next to, in my example, a dog kennel, you can't bitch about, sorry, you can't gripe about dog's barking. I understand you guys are different. You guys were there first, so I understand.
I appreciate your comment and raising that issue.
Your analogy is akin to somebody moving here from the city and then bitching about the smell of cow poop and, come on. You moved from the city to here, you know, so I got it.
All right, so, any, I mean, these are definitely things that we need to discuss on Monday before we make a final ruling on this, so. Anything else?
It's exactly what you paid for.
Yeah. Do you got anything else you want to discuss regarding noise resolution or the pay entry?
No.
No. Mr.-
No, sir.
No. All right, so I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, do you want to continue with the work session?
You're welcome.
You do not?
Oh, you know what that means, Mr. Rains? Quit calling.
Not completely. I would like to not have a special pop meeting.
Yeah, seriously, thanks for-
I would like to not have a special pop meeting right in the middle of our work session. That's what we all agreed to, not this. And not this platform, whatever's going on here.
It didn't happen, it didn't happen the way it worked.